Mayor Lutha?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mayor Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks?
Mr. Tom.
Here.
Dr. Miller is in route and Mr. Shanks will be right back. Please stand, remain standing for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to your children. Forgive our sins, we ask. Accept our thanks, we also ask. Be with us as we try to conduct the business of our city. We act these blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Under announcements and special recognition, supporting expansion of Danville Community College Regional Center for Advanced Technology and Training, RCAT, a presentation by the President of DCC, Dr. P. Caldwell-Ramsey. Welcome, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Saunders, other members of council. It's a privilege to be with you this evening. We appreciate your giving us some time and for the city manager for working with me and including the information that you have in your packet. I'd also like to introduce other members of our, not the entire team of 165 full-time employees, but certainly members of the team that's been working on this project. First of all, Mr. Scott Barnes, our Vice President for Financial Services; Mr. Jeff Arnold, who is the Vice President for Workforce Services; two architects who have been working with us closely on this project from Dewberry, John Hanson, Ransom, excuse me, John, and Larry Hassan. Gentlemen, we appreciate your support. I'm not going to go into the packet of information, ladies and gentlemen, but I thought you certainly would want to know that on the front page, we believe that this project is very important to making our region more competitive. Certainly, the fact that RCAT is located here in the city of Danville, serves Danville, Pennsylvania County, and Halifax County. We serve about 145,000 citizens throughout the region. We believe that this will make us more competitive in the years ahead. We work very closely with the economic development staff here. We value that relationship with our economic developers, and we believe that this will make their job, it's not easy, obviously, to retain and attract jobs, but we think that this can be an asset for them, and we're very excited about this. All of you know that we've been training machinists before World War II, and you have a reference to that. The old Danville Technical Institute, which was located on North Main Street, then relocated in 1946 as a result of this city's efforts, the Danville School Board and the City Council, to relocate that operation to the old Danville Military Institute. Today, your community college's machining program is the best in the state, and we would submit to you that it is one of the best in the United States. We just want to make it better. I had a chance to talk to some of the folks from Rolls-Royce. I know Jeremy Stratten was there and others a few months ago, and the CFO at Rolls, some of you know, said we need two very important areas of workers, mechanical engineers and machinists. And so, we know that, we think we have a decent chance of attracting some suppliers, from Rolls-Royce suppliers, to our area. We know that there's a mega park that the city and the county are collaborating on, and we want to do everything we can to help you bring jobs to that park and to other industrial sites in our area. You see, some of our local industry supporters, just a few. I have about 12 more companies who hire machinists at the local level other than the one I've referenced on page two. You'll look at the fact that we're, a couple of communities in the US, the Greenville-Spartanburg area, we know is an area that has attracted thousands and thousands of manufacturing jobs and what their technology center means to them. Chattanooga is another area recently attracted Volkswagen. And so, we feel like this is going to enable Danville and Pennsylvania County to be competitive, even more competitive than we are. So, what do we want to do? These gentlemen here, we brought all of our high-tech equipment with us tonight, and so, they have a couple of, well, I'll call them slides and posters of the, one of the, of the building, proposed building expansion itself. And then, we also, it would be behind RCAT and thanks to the joint authority for allowing me to present in October of 2011 to kind of lay out the scope. But, the bottom line is, we want to double the size of our machining program. And if we didn't have 100% placement and if skilled machinists were not so, such in a high demand across this nation, maybe we wouldn't be so passionate about this. But, we feel like this is a winner. And so, it will, it will give Ledwood Wright and Jeremy and the rest of the staff that extra little wow factor that we know it's important when you're bringing in a prospect. And so, we would like for this council to support this effort. A couple of other additional items. By moving our machining program from the main campus to this new RCAT expansion, it will free up the current lab for other program expansions. For example, welding. I tell students and parents, and maybe students who are undecided that come over to the campus, I'll say, "Have you, have you met any unemployed welders, accountants, mechanical engineers, machinists, and nurses lately?" And you don't find many of those folks unemployed. And so, we're going to take the square footage that's currently on the main campus and renovate it into a world-class welding lab. And I know Ledwood is very interested in making sure that that happens as well as the machinist. It'll also free up space for other programs. We're going to be going to the Tobacco Commission, and we, we hope that we will have strong support locally from across our region, and we would certainly appreciate the support of City Council this evening. And we certainly appreciate all the past support that you have given to your community college. And we will continue to make a commitment to the people of this city and this region. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and other members of council.
Thank you. Any questions? Question for Dr. Ramsey? Mr. Campbell?
Well, I'd say, Dr. Ramsey, I just commend you on the vision and initiative to move forward. This is going to have a major impact upon job development in our community. And I've worked with you on several projects in the past. I'm just excited for what's happening, and our future is bright. We'll turn the corner. I'm just very thankful for DCC.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Dr. Miller?
Well, I want to commend you too. This is what it's all about, workforce training. I mean, this is what they used to call, this is where the rubber meets the road. You've got to have a good workforce. Great work, keep doing it.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
And Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Mayor, it was my privilege to work five years with Dr. Ramsey and Mr. Barnes and Mr. Arnold and that staff at DCC. They do remarkable things with what they have. And this would be just a fabulous addition to our region and what it would mean for our citizens to be able to be trained. And as Dr. Ramsey said, they've had 100% placement. Every one of these machinists have jobs, 100%, and most of them have two or three job offers where they can choose from. So, congratulations to you.
Thank you, thank you, buddy.
Anyone else? Mr. Shanks?
Dr. Ramsey, I'm particularly deaf to the project. It looks like a great thing for the area. What, when you ask the City Council for support, at this point, what kind of support are you asking for?
We need your endorsement. And we need to be able to take your endorsement to the Tobacco Commission. I think it's vital that the jurisdictions support this, that our economic developers support this, our chambers. And we also have industry support, significant industry support. And we'll be going to the Tobacco Commission with some industry partners in, you know, in the audience. Of course, we have to submit a compelling proposal, and it's very competitive for the money, especially about $7.5 million. But, we feel like having broad-based support and certainly from the elected officials is critical.
Anyone else? Dr. Miller?
Is recommend, in order? Can we make an endorsement at this point?
Mr. Attorney?
Well, when are you going to the Tobacco Commission, Dr. Ramsey?
Oh, you need it then.
We're going to the commission, I believe it's in June.
There is a letter in the packet. It's a simple, straightforward letter of support, and that would be, I think, adequate, more than adequate for this purpose. So, I'd suggest you authorize the mayor to convey that letter to DCC.
Well, you could certainly make a motion doing that. I mean, it would...
Not necessary.
You could, you could do a motion authorizing the mayor, somebody could make, offer a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter that's in the packet in support of the project. And if it passes, then we're good to go.
So moved.
Dr. Miller? Second. Second by Mr. Gilstra. Discussion on the motion? Let me say that, thank you, Mr. King, I was going to recommend that we do that, a letter of support and any other support that council may feel will be appropriate. I have been to the campus, and I have seen your machine shop, and you do need more space. You do need more space. I read the entire package, very, very impressive. 100% employment rate is pretty much unheard of. And the starting pay is very good. So, I too commend DCC on all that you do, not just for our region, but for our state, and yes, the nation. Because you have some data from other states that also employ our people. I noticed when you mentioned Rolls-Royce, the Vice Mayor smiled, but I won't ask him why, but he was just laughing over there very heartily. But I think that's great, I think it's very great. So, the motion on the floor, for discussion on the motion. Number two?
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstra?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutha?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tom?
Aye.
Dr. Ramsey, it is unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank all members of council, City Manager King and staff. And it's a pleasure to be with you this evening, and we hope that in, oh, maybe two years or less, we'll be cutting a ribbon and making a dedication. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Under communication, those who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any item listed on the agenda, you will be heard when that item is considered. Anyone wish to speak on any item not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir, and your name, please.
My name's James Turpin. You've seen me here before, I think.
Welcome.
And I'm here again tonight to speak on behalf of the city retirees concerning the cost of living adjustment. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, City Manager. As you recall, I came to you, I think it was in August 2010. It's amazing how time flies in heaven, fun. I came to you at that point and gave you a lot of data showing the impact that the lack of cost of living adjustments or was inadequate cost of living adjustments, the effect that it had on the retirees. I only went back 10 years. And so, in essence, it showed that the average retiree had probably lost about $8,000 of purchasing power out of his retirement check due to that fact. We requested at that time, not so much a cost of living, because we knew that times were difficult back then, but to put a cost of living clause in our retirement plan that would take the political process out of it. Those requests were denied. Really not sure exactly why. I've never given an explanation. I should pause and recognize that several members of the retirement community with us tonight. More would have been here. The weather hadn't been bad, so I'd like for them to stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, here we are again, almost two years later, hat in hand. That's what we're forced to do because we have no provisions. Consumer Price Index doesn't control it, or controls the political process. We have nobody to speak for us. We have nobody really to have us on the agenda. And all due respect, city council members come and go, city managers, administrators come and go. The retirees are here. Each one of you have different priorities. You have different agendas that you want to look at. And the city retirees are very low on that agenda. They're very low on that priority list. It's easy to push them aside and shove them down. And that's exactly what's been done through the years. Last time, I gave you a lot of data trying to show the impact of the lack of cost of living adjustment did to the retirees. Sometimes data doesn't really jump out and grab you, or maybe it doesn't sink home. So, tonight, just to try to illustrate the point, I brought a living, breathing example tonight. I'd like Arthur Stryder to come forth. Arthur was a fireman for 35 years in the city of Danville. He was dedicated. Gave, I guess, most of his working life to the city of Danville. Arthur's been retired 34 years. Lord's blessed him with a good life and a long life. Arthur, I want you to just comment briefly what you told us at the retiring breakfast the other day, what the lack of cost of living adjustments has done to you and where you stand now and what's your situation.
Your honor, Mayor Saunders, members of City Council, it's a privilege for me to be here to talk to you tonight. It's also been a privilege and an honor for me to serve the city of Danville with the Danville Fire Department for 35 years. The pay was very low when I started, $105 a month. And when I retired, I had only reached, I was a captain on the fire department, and my salary was $1,300. And my retirement was based on the last five years, average five years of my pay. So, you can imagine, it was very low at that time. I'm now living at Avenue Place, and it's not cheap over there. I have, I was fortunate enough to have a little saving in the Danville Credit Union. I have to go into that saving every month. 15 months from now, it'll all be gone because I have to pay $300 out of my savings every month. And I beg for you, City Councilmen, and Mayor, and all concerned, to please consider a raise for the city retirees. I'm not here speaking for myself. I'm speaking in behalf of all the city employees. And thank you very much.
And thank you, sir, for your service. Thank you so much.
Arthur is just one of many situations like that. I would just inform tonight that some of the retirees that have not reached the point of where they can go on Medicare are still having to carry their insurance, the medical insurance, and they're carrying it through the city. And it's my understanding that's almost doubled just recently, the premium for that insurance. So, I could go into numerous examples. We know how the cost of living is hitting everybody. City retirees are no different. The next topic, I just like the point I like to make is, what's the purpose of a retirement plan? What is the intent? We would think it's normal to provide a means and some substance for those that retire to meet their living expenses. Our forefathers, when they first established this retirement plan at the city of Danville, and I don't know exactly today, and I wasn't there. But I imagine the intent was to provide the means for them to take care of themselves. Now, I don't think if they had been aware of the animal inflation back then, that they would not have provided a provision to take care of that. But evidently, it was not a concern back then. But we all know that has changed through the years. It's an animal that will destroy all of us unless we have some way to keep up with it. It's devastating to us. If you're going to have a retirement plan, and evidently, the fathers thought it was worthwhile, and evidently, those today think it's worthwhile because we'll still have it, then why not have it function properly? Why just go part of the way with it? Why not have it so that it functions properly? And it will not function properly without a cost of living adjustment. That's a fact of life, and we somehow have got to recognize that. The next point, it's always a matter of cost. And I realize, and all the retirees, I think, realize, we're not unaware of the difficult situation that council's in and the city administration's in in trying to balance the budget this year. So, we're not, we aren't sensitive to that. However, retirees have done their share through the years of not receiving cost of living adjustments so that the budget can be balanced. That's just a fact. In essence, each year in which the Consumer Price Index calls for a cost of living adjustment, and you don't grant that adjustment to the retiree, you in essence are taking that money back, that purchasing power back from them and using it to help balance the budget. That's just a fact. And everybody has a different viewpoint on things, and I realize that, and I'm just giving you what we think is ours today. But some of it, I think, is true. You should look at a COLA as just a cost of doing business. Just like any other item that you're required to fund or to provide for. It's an obligation, and you meet that obligation. It's just a cost of doing business. That's why you should look at a COLA. Don't be afraid to put the clause in there. The Consumer Price Index will control whether it's granted or not. You can set ceilings on it or maximums, which what I gave you over two years ago was an example of the type of clause we were looking for. You can do that. Just, sure, it may cost a little more, but it's the price of doing business. The retirees who gave their dedicated work life to the city of Danville had faith that the city would treat them right, trust them, and it's not being done today through the lack of that. As I said earlier, don't forget the retirees. I know that they're gone and they're kind of out of the way. It's so easy just to forget them and push them aside. But each one of you, one day, some of you may already be there, are going to be retirees. And is that the way you want to be treated? Ask yourself. So, in essence, we've got three items requesting tonight. Number one, we need a cost of living adjustment. The investments are doing better in the fund. We recovered a lot from that 2008, 2009 period. I don't think it would have a big, I don't exactly have the numbers, but I don't think it will be a big impact in terms of what you've got to contribute to do that. If you feel you just can't do that, the second option would be, provide a 13th check to the retirees. In other words, sometimes, say, in July or August, retiree would receive two checks that month. The first check being the normal entitlement check, and the second one being as high as you feel you can grant, certainly no less than half of what they normally receive in a month. We feel certain our fund will provide for that, and it's not going to be that detrimental. But the problem with that, it's a one-time thing, and then next year, we're back here again. And each year, you lose the cost of living adjustment. It's gone forever, and it compounds itself. And of course, the third item, again, I'm requesting, please put, I am paralyzing, please put a cost of living clause in our retirement plan so that we can take the political process out of it and the different opinions and things that come through the years and let it be a function that's obsolete, I mean, complete and objective, not subjective. In closing, I'd like to say that in 1954 and 1955, John F. Kennedy, when he was a young senator, wrote a book, and it was titled, Profiles in Carriage. And it was about eight politicians, leaders of this nation, historical leaders of this nation. And where they had the courage and the integrity and the strength to make decisions that was difficult. It was not going to be popular sometime, but they made it and did the right thing. So, I'm asking you, search your heart, do the right thing. I don't think anything I said here tonight would be the wrong thing. But you've got to consider and look after the retirees. I thank you for your attention to the matter. If you have any comments or questions, I ask you, please speak up. I'm getting so I don't hear as well. And if it's not a cost of living, I can't get a hearing.
Mr. Turpin, very thorough presentation, but I had a couple of questions. The, how, just for the benefit of those of us that aren't familiar like you are, how is the retirement figure, how do they come up with the figure that you draw up monthly?
It's my understanding, Mr. Shanks, there's three or four things to determine. The actuaries look at the numbers and how long people are going to live, et cetera, and how many retirees will be in the plan. And they figure out what's needed, and they usually allow a 3% cost of living adjustment in those numbers. So, based on that number, then, they look at what they think the investments will do, what the contributions will be from the city retired employees, and what the city council would have to make up to provide for that number. So, it's usually built in. Now, they build it in and say, "This is what's needed" from the terms of contribution from the city. Again, I'm not absolutely sure on this, but when they don't grant the increase to the employees, even though it's built in the numbers, the retirees, I mean, when that goes on for several years, of course, that means less money the city's got to put in it because none of us taken out for that purpose. So, it's, Ms. Dameron and Barbara probably can explain that a little better, but that's where, that's just the general scope. It's how well investments do, also what the demand will be on the retirement plan in the future based on length of life, what average salary employees will have that's going to retire. And they come up with this number, and then... And they come up with this number, and then they project what the investments are going to do and what the employee is going to provide, and the city's got to provide the difference to meet that number.
I'm a little confused, because I thought earlier someone stated that your retirement was based on the last five years, the average of the last five years of your employment with the city. Is that true or not true?
Again, I think it's maybe changed a little bit since my time, but I think it's the average top five years.
Okay.
Not necessarily the last five, it's the average top five.
So you draw a percentage of that average or that average on an annual basis?
We might be better off if we, we've provided that information to council before, and we'd be happy to again, but to make sure you're getting the latest information, there has been some change over the years, we really ought to provide that to you in writing.
I was just trying to get a magnitude, a relative magnitude number, and if we can't have it tonight, that's fine. May I follow up with two other questions? The, can you tell me, well, I'll tell you what. I was going to ask how the state handles cost of living. Are you familiar with how the state retirement?
What we gave you almost two years ago that suggested wording for the cost of living clause was taken from the state, in essence, the exact wording.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tomlin.
You may have said, Mr. Turpin, and I apologize for not knowing, the last time a COLA was granted to the retirement, retired employees, do you know when that was?
2009 was the last increase.
City manager, you've probably supplied us this. I would like to know the budgetary issues, if we put a provision in, what our ongoing budget liability would be for a cost of living adjustment provision in the employee's retirement plan moving forward. Thank you for coming before us. I served on the utility commission with you, Mr. Turpin. You were an excellent commissioner, and I appreciate you taking the time to speak for a lot of people that probably have similar, a similar voice or similar ideas and feelings, but maybe don't want to come up here and share them. So you speak for a lot of people tonight, and I appreciate you coming before us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Campbell.
Sir, I'd like to say that we are concerned, and we do appreciate you and other retirees who have served the city of Danville faithfully, and we'll all be looking into this matter very closely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I too would like to thank you and all of our city retirees for the work that they have done, the volunteer work that they're still doing, and we really appreciate you coming to us and bringing your concern to us. I'm sure there'll be further discussion. I don't have an answer tonight, but I'm sure there will be further discussion. Thank you all so much for all that you do.
Thank you all for considering. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not listed on the agenda? Okay, at this point, this time, I'd like to call Assistant Fire Chief Steve Dishman to come forward. I think we all know, a lot of talk about emergency preparedness, tornadoes, hurricane, et cetera. And I know that I have had many citizens to ask me, how will we be notified citywide in the event of an emergency? And where would we go if we must, if we have to evacuate? So we know about the radio, the cell phone, the newspaper, the internet, but for those who do not have access at the time the emergency take place, what do we do in the city? How would the city protect us? Talk to us about preparedness? And I said, okay, we'll do that. And Mr. King, Assistant Fire Chief Dishman, come tonight, and I know you have all the answers. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. First of all, as part of the preparedness today was a exercise, a statewide exercise, actually, in tornado preparedness. We'd like to give you a little bit on that, but I'll also answer your questions in just a moment, too, as to the other items of notifications as well. One of the first things that was put out yesterday by the city as part of this, but also came from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. One thing, last year, we had 51 tornadoes reported in Virginia, which is the second highest ever in record.
I'm sorry, you say 51?
51 tornadoes actually impacted Virginia last year. There were 10 deaths, 100 injuries, 212 homes and 17 businesses destroyed. And obviously, 51 impacts, that pretty much affected the entire state. The first thing that they wanted to do was warn people what to do in the event. And, excuse me, first thing is go to a safe area. And a safe area would be usually the lowest point in your home. And we'll talk a little bit more about what we did with the schools and some other aspects of business in just a moment as well with that. Get away from windows, you know, because that's, your flying debris is one of the, one of the major problems with that. And the term now, of course, being in the fire service, we have the stop, drop, and roll. Now they have the drop, cover, and hold for tornadoes, which is what all the children went through today in the schools, as well as other aspect, other people that participated. And it basically is a down on your knees, holding your head in your hands against the wall to protect yourself with that, and staying as low as possible. Another aspect in this that we're trying to get across is the fact, a lot of people do not understand the difference between a tornado watch and a tornado warning. Very simply put, a tornado watch means that the weather conditions are such that they could produce a tornado. A warning, on the other hand, is usually an imminent threat. Either the weather service through their equipment has picked up cloud activity or wind activity that would indicate a tornado, or someone has actually spotted a phone cloud. So that's the difference between the watch and the warning. Very briefly on the drill today, all the schools in the city are participating in this program, and the fire department was involved, as well as our emergency services' secondary elements, and our community emergency response team assisted in this as auditors in the different schools to observe their drills and to kind of score them. And we had a 15-point check sheet for that there. The support activities for this were with the emergency services, fire department, and Dr. Dave Cochran, who's the coordinator for the academic and operational services with the school system with that. It went very well. A lot of participation, I mean, obviously, full participation, and actually went through the positioning and everything with the teachers and students. And it was, it was, it was a pleasure to participate in that, to see how well that went, and the order, and how the children responded in that as well. As I mentioned, it was a 15-point thing, element in their training. And that, and this even included anybody that might have been visiting their schools or that would have been working on the grounds outside. They went into a full protective scale with that. Now to your question, Mr. Mayor. On our notification methods, the first alert typically is by the National Weather Service, and that's where you get your TV shows or radio programs interrupted by that really loud noise that everyone has experienced, because they are the ones that are monitoring the weather, obviously, and they have a very quick response in that. We also have the capability locally of generating this message through the local media, which it can be transmitted to the cable company, so they can put out the alert, and as well as other radio and other immediate media. Some other capabilities through our emergency communication center, faxes, emails, and the like that would be sent out to different departments or different contact agencies as well. And for emergency services personnel that are on duty, there would be a radio broadcast. So there's immediate information that goes out from that. And two, all staff can be notified via text messaging. Another capability, although not quite as rapid, but it can be very targeted, and can be used in other aspects, as a reverse 911 system that we have, that we can put a message out either verbally by phone, or it can be a computer-generated message via the phone. And we can target one community, all the way down to one street, all the way to the entire city with this system. And we can also use our local government access channel as an immediate access for those as well. That's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, sir. But any other questions or anything that anyone might have?
Question, comment, with Mr. Jay Dishman? Anyone? Mr. Vice Mayor?
I noticed Lynchburg today went back to the siren and scared half the people to death. Now, we used to do that once a week, testing on Saturdays at noon, and I assume, I know a lot of got shot down because it woke people up at work second shift, but why did that system stop?
Well, because it became somewhat antiquated. That was the old civil defense air raid sirens, as you well know. Some communities still use that, but due to the increase in the media that was available, that was one of the primary aspects of that.
I just thought it was interesting, Lynchburg went back to it today for the first time. I have a alert radio in my home, which came from my employment, keep my broadcasting. And when that thing went off with that tornado alert this morning, I think it was 9:50, 48, it scared me half to death. And, but they said, this is a test and so forth. Apparently, you already knew it was coming. I did. So, but I didn't get a thing on the cell phone, it was not on the TV, and it was not on the radio. So I don't know why they didn't get, they didn't fall in with this test.
There was a press release had been put out by Mr. Hendries yesterday.
Oh, yeah, I remember seeing that.
Okay, so, and the state had put some things out. It had not been one of the big media blast items, as it may have been. But that is one of the things, sir, if you'd like, we would be glad to put you on our text list for any alerts.
Well, I have a siren in my house.
Oh, you did? Okay, well, you got that, sir.
Yeah, it was alerted and scared half to death. But I didn't know why it didn't come on the other media like a real one would have.
I think, some, some did. I'm not sure what the level of participation was.
That's all I have. I just thought it was interesting, Lynchburg did what we used to do today.
Dr. Miller?
In Joplin, Missouri, last year, the major hospital was taken out by a tornado. What alternative medical facilities have we set up in case that happens here?
Well, we keep a list and contact with other peripheral medical facilities to find, to maintain their availability. We have contact numbers where we can make immediate calls and the like with that.
What about triage right here? You know, there's got to be a place to go to imminent, before you send them to Lynchburg, Greensboro, whatever.
Oh, certainly. Well, what we have is a mobile, what is known as a mass casualty trailer that the lifesaving crew has, and we have, we have trained in the mass casualty to operate in the field.
And where will that be, so somebody's hurt knows where to go?
It will be taken to the scene. It is mobile. It will be taken to, it will be taken to a given location, wherever the most impacted area, or if necessary, it could be taken to the hospital grounds. So it is totally mobile and would be transported to the most useful spot at the time.
Also, just, you know, as of last year, we could have an earthquake here, too.
Yes, sir.
There's certain things you do and don't do during an earthquake. One is you don't get on a stairwell. Stairwells splinter, and wood particularly, and you get impaled. Number two is you don't get under a structure. You get beside a structure. In other words, this death, this place, you wouldn't get on this death, you get beside it. So let it bear the full brunt of the fall, and you're not trapped underneath. If you're beside it, it's like a triangle, you're, you have airspace to breathe, and you might get out. When you get under a structure, you could be trapped there and not be able to get out. Certain things to do. Interestingly enough, the safest place is probably the newspaper office. Newspaper will not collapse. So if you're beside a stack of newspapers, no matter what falls on it, it won't compress. It's a tidbit. But anyway, there's certain things you do in earthquakes you don't do in a tornado. You do differently.
Yes, sir. And that will probably be the next phase of our blitz to inform people of things of that nature.
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you for the work and the service that you're doing for the community. I had a discussion with some citizens and lifesaving crew stating that in reference to communication, it would be more efficient if the county and the city would merge their 911 together. How do you feel about that concept?
Sir, I really cannot address that very well, because the reviews that I get are somewhat mixed. As you say, some are, there's pros and cons, and I still think there's a lot more research that needs to be done on that. Not trying to be evasive, but I think there is more research that does need to be performed to fully answer that question.
Mr. Gilstrout?
Just curious to know if the children this morning knew in advance that they were going to have, and the reason I asked the question is the facility I was in this morning, which was not a public school, by the way, but they came through and warned us, says, we're going to have a tornado drill in seven minutes, and this is what you do. And I'm just curious if the children were prepared or they just...
Well, this had been advertised, and I think that they gave some notice for the children. First of all, so that they wouldn't frighten them, especially the younger children. I happen to be in preschool school and with that, and there are special needs children, so they kind of go through this, letting them know so that if it does actually happen, I think then they have a better, although, yes, sir, they don't react quite the same when you're prepared as opposed to being not prepared.
Oh, I think practice is very important. I'm glad you did the drill, but I was just, I'm sort of like you, I'd hate to think we had 600 frightened children this morning.
Hey, Mr. Jones?
Have we ever tried, two questions, have we ever tried the reverse 911 messaging center? And the second question is, the number of people who have done away with landlines and have cell phones, if someone is sitting here and said, how would they get in touch with me if I got a new cell phone? How would you react?
Well, with, now, as far as the reverse 911, I'm not familiar with any testing of that. I'm sure that it has been, but I'm relatively new on that end of that. As far as cell phones, typically, people with cell phones and texting capability can sign on to notification services. It's no additional charge from what they're known to do. So that's how that could be done, and there's, there's an immediate text message that can be, that they can sign on to with, through either the multiple services that do give those alerts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other questions, comments?
The discussion has been a couple of times about things relative to the sirens that we all grew up with here. And I, just something deep down makes me think, cell service getting strained during a catastrophe and going, not being available. I wonder what the wisdom would be to look at that siren system one more time. I'm thinking of people out on the street that aren't near a media outlet, people that are on cell phones that, I mean, if you've ever been around places when a catastrophe happens with cell service, you don't have cell phones. Just food for thought.
Oh, absolutely, sir. And in fact, as has been mentioned, in some areas where they're using these are areas that are very prone to catastrophic weather events. So they are still fairly popular in some of those areas. And I certainly see your point with that.
Other questions, comments? As a follow-up regards to the siren system, the fire department is stationed particularly throughout the city, and alarm system there, but I think that's been given tonight to be very helpful. We do appreciate that, and we're good job representing it. Five people want to know, and we have a lot of technology, but there are still some who just don't get the information for whatever reason. But thank you for all that you do, and we really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, congratulations, a little minute. The regular council meeting held on February 21st, 2012. Your motion, Mr. Campbell, second, and Mr. Rowley. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Gilstrout?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luther?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Consider agenda, the following budget amendments, item B and C, have been previously discussed by city council, introduced for first reading, be further considered by city council in Consider agenda, the following budget amendments, item B and C, have been previously discussed by city council, introduced for first reading, be further considered by city council in public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, we notice no separate discussion on these issues, on these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by council member or a citizen, the item will be removed from the consent process and considered separately. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? I close the public hearing. I would like to pull item B for discussion. Anyone else wish to pull item, see you any other item? If not, is there a motion for item C? Now, Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2012 budget appropriation ordinance by anticipating revenues in the amount of $12,245 in federal funds from Department of Criminal Justice, $1,361 to purchase hardware, software, and furnishings to implement an in-house records management system, and to provide after hours intake in a telemedicine program for referred juveniles and appropriating the same for final adoption.
Okay. There's second, Mr. Toma?
Yep.
This, discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luther?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrout?
Aye.
The reason I pull item B at our recent, earlier meeting, Vice Mayor Luther, acting manager, for some information regarding this rail situation and the $15,000. So I'm asking the manager to comment with regards to the Vice Mayor's request at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Six years ago, the city and Pennsylvania County were working together to recruit Suedewood, we all know as a subsidiary of the world-renowned IKEA Furniture Company. And we were trying to recruit that industry to our Kane Creek Industrial Park. The competition was very intense, and Danville desperately needed jobs, investment, and the prestige of an IKEA-owned manufacturing plant. The city manager, economic development director, and city council in office at that time, put together an incentive package that they determined was necessary to win Suedewood's location decision. This included a prepared and permitted site, roads, water, wastewater, natural gas, electric utilities, and a railroad spur. The city and county were fortunate to secure a $900,000 grant from the Commonwealth to build the rail line to the site. I believe that the city and county officials in office at the time would have readily, have readily paid for that rail spur with the city's funds, if necessary, to get the plant there. Confident that Suedewood would make full use of the new rail spur, the city and county willfully agreed to refund the grant if specified levels of rail traffic were not reached within the first five years of construction, and those levels were at least 10 rail cars per week, or 520 per year. This and other terms and conditions of the incentive package put together at the time were reviewed and acted upon in public meetings that were covered fully by the news media. Soon after the Suedewood plant became operational, the company shifted its mode of resource delivery and product shipments from rail to truck. Consequently, the rail spur has not been put to its intended use. The terms of the grant now require that the city and county refund $900,000 to the Commonwealth at $450,000 each. We have requested a waiver from this requirement, which has been rejected, but the Commonwealth has allowed us to repay the grant in monthly installments over a two-year period. Should Suedewood's future use of the rail meet the threshold stated in the grant, there may be an opportunity to renegotiate the grant with the Commonwealth. Landing the Suedewood plant here was a great economic development victory for the city and the county. Suedewood employs 350 workers and will soon be expanding its facilities. It has helped us attract two other IKEA suppliers, and we hope to bring more here. Having to refund the rail spur grant is unfortunate, but it was a risk that those in office at the time determined was worth taking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Counsel, your pleasure regarding this item. I'm Dave. Now, Mr. Campbell?
This may I move for the adoption...
Item B?
Amendment to the fiscal year, number one.
I think that's right, page, page two, at the bottom on a public hearing, item B.
This may I move for the adoption amendment, or this amendment to fiscal year 2012 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a transfer from the general fund balances to the amount of $450,000 for repayment of a grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for construction of a rail spur to serve the Suedewood facility and incorporate the same.
Okay, your second. Now, Mr. Rowley? Discussion on the motion? Dr. Miller?
Now, this is from this, the fiscal year budget, I thought we were going to pay it back a little bit of the time.
We are paying it in monthly installments, but we're liable for the full $450,000.
So it'll take us how many, we're going to pay over 12 months?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Twenty-four, I'm sorry.
Twenty-four, twenty-four months. Twenty-four months. Two years, two years. We'll take it all out of this year's budget.
At about $18,000, roughly, is there a amount?
That's right.
Okay. Further discussion, Mr. Shanks?
Yeah, I follow, follow on Dr. Miller's track in here. Why are we putting the full amount in this year's budget?
This year, yeah.
We're reserving it in a cap, in a capital reserve, just to make sure that it's there for those payments.
So no further budgeting is, for this item will be needed in this coming year's budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Do we get any interest on that? Can we, it's going to sit there for two years, part of it?
We would only pay the, the specified payments of $18,750 a month. But all of the interest accrued to that reserve is the city's, it's not the state's.
Right. That's it.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Luther?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrout?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luther?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrout?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luther?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Consideration request by special use permit to allow boarding for my current business.
My boarding facility will be an inside, it will be six suites, they will be constructed of walls that'll be about 36 inches high, they'll be about four feet by five feet, air-conditioned and temperature-controlled. I understand, I have a neighbor who is concerned about the outside area that will be used by the dogs that will be allowed to go out there. There is, they've already put a restriction, or they have requested a restriction of, a limit of 12, which I'm fine with that, I would never have more than 12 dogs there at a time, and a 25-pound limit, because I only have small dogs in my facility, I never do large ones. The outdoor area, which there is some concern about, there will be a privacy fenced area on the outside, it'll be about half of the yard space on the exterior of the building that I'm in. It will be privacy fencing, it will be constructed at points of six feet, it will be scalloped down to a five-feet area, and then back up to the six-foot area. So no one would be able to see the animals out there. They will never be left out there for long periods of time, they will be taken out in the morning, and they'll be taken out in the evening during the day I operate my grooming salon. So I think the concern was from one of my neighbors that there would be dogs outside barking during the daytime, and that would never happen because they would never be left outside during the daytime. And they would all be back inside by 8:00 PM at night. I think that was the major concern, unless someone has some questions, and I'll be glad to answer those.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes, ma'am. I see in some of the property, it talked about not to exceed $10. Did, did you understand it was 12?
They changed that to 12 at the zoning meeting.
Is it in there or not?
It changed, eliminated it to 12.
Yes, condition number, condition number two, Mr. Rowley, of the special use conditions.
Okay.
Other question, comments? Mr. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to point out that the, it was goodwill industries that was concerned about dogs barking while they have clients and classes. But they went on, their very first thing was they were not opposed to you doing it.
Correct.
So that, that's not, I mean, they all are with you on this, and I think with the recommendations that were put in, they're going to be happy.
Right. There was just that question, and I just wanted everyone to understand what actually would be out there. So if someone did question you as to what was going to take place outside.
Yes, that's true.
I haven't started any of that construction or done anything until I get granted the special use permit.
Other question, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? I close the public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, may we adopt an ordinance granting a special use permit to operate a kennel in accordance with Article 3.1, Section C, Item 7 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended at 534 West Over Drive.
Okay. Your second, Mr. Gilstrout? Discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrout?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luther?
Aye.
Consideration request by special use permit to allow construction of an accessory building, without a primary building, on approximately 34 acres on Big Rock Road, parcel ID 78441. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, I'm Tom Brown, and I represent the party interested in this instruction. I, any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any question? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Counsel, your pleasure. I close the public hearing. Counsel, your pleasure. Now, Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance granting a special use permit to allow construction of an accessory building without a primary building in accordance with Article 3.A, Section C, Item 1 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended on approximately 34 acres of Big Rock Road, parcel ID 78441.
Okay, there's second. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, and I have a question, too.
Okay, yes.
It was a little hard to understand how you could have an accessory building on a vacant lot that had no other building. And the building, you should know, is going to be for horses, I think about half, no, 11 horses. But I got an explanation from the city manager of, of how you can have an accessory building without a main building. But I still am not 100% sure. Maybe Mr. Shanks, who's on the plan of commission, can explain that a little bit.
I had the same question, Mr. Vice Mayor.
But are you assured, Mr. Counsel over there, that we, this is okay to have an accessory building when you don't have a main building?
Yes, sir, you can. Our code provides for that.
Very good.
I believe Mr. Gillis is trying to help with that also, Mr. Vice Mayor. You have a comment, sir?
Only if necessary. Explain the difference between, this is the only district that actually allows for an accessory building without a primary building, because you can have agricultural-type buildings, barns, and others without a actual house. Most places you have a residential dwelling or some other building, you then build an accessory building to serve that primary building. In this case, you will have a barn, not an actual residence, so.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrout?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luther?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Relation, Mr. Manager?
None this evening.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shanks?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's March the 20th, and the city manager has presented each of us some proposals for the budget for the upcoming year. Time is growing short, and I do not believe that the proposals that have been presented reflect fiscal responsibility or the desires of city council and the majority of the citizens that we represent. Until we discuss the proposals in detail, I'm not sure how we can address our concerns. For several months now, I have suggested that we have too many capital-intensive projects, and we should have prioritized those projects. We're now spending, we now have spending proposals in front of us that show substantial increases in spending that should not be in this budget. Raising real estate taxes, unlike, and unlike previous city councils, spending from fund balances in the general fund and the electric fund without looking at substantial budget reductions are irresponsible and non-sustainable. We also know that without an increase in real estate taxes to the tune of about 10 cents in the tax rate, we're likely looking at closing another school. Although there are some good proposals, and some good reductions proposed in this proposal that's been presented to us, no serious forethought has been given to an austerity program, no ranking of major, major initiatives have been discussed, and there have been very little discussion on accounting expenses, and no discussion, very little discussion on what programs can be reduced, eliminated, or delayed. Most families and businesses have not, have had to adjust over the last three to four years, yet the manager is looking at substantial increases in the millions of dollars in program funding, eliminating a second school or raising the real estate tax rate by 10 cents. Raising cigarette taxes or creating a tax on cigarettes, which we argued this item last year, and I think we were convinced that the net income to residents would be a loss in tax revenue and hurt local businesses. Pelfering substantial in the millions of dollars from fund balance in general fund, electric fund, and gas fund, which will likely, could likely, lead to gas and electric rate increases in the future, and other programs, such as an ongoing increase in the transfer of funds from the electric and gas fund. I do not believe the council implied this kind of direction in the city manager's budget, and I suggest that we stop, step back, start over, look for priorities, so that, so that a physically responsible budget can be presented, one that reflects the city council's desires